So it is just about six o'clock on Thursday, January 4th. Happy New Year, everyone. I want to call the meeting to order. First thing is set a just agenda. Do we have any changes tonight? Hearing none. We're going to proceed with the agenda as written. Communication from the audience. I believe Harry's probably here to talk about an agenda item.
Just to be here to...
To be here. We love it that you're here. Thank you.
I heard two meetings in a row.
I was hearing he was prepping to run for select.
Yeah. I heard he's one of the ones that have...
I heard it was if it's three meetings in a row. Oh, three meetings, you're not adding.
All right. Awesome. Next, select board to approve the minutes from...
Oh, we can add it.
Well, do you want to add something?
Yeah.
What do you want to add?
No, Christine was going to do it, but...
Oh, I'll do it.
Who do we add? Item five.
Are we adding another item or just something to a report?
We need to discuss a piece of equipment at the fire department.
As an item five?
Yeah. Potentially action needed.
Fire de... okay.
Piece of equipment that needs to be purchased.
Make a motion to accept the amended agenda.
Second?
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. So we've amended our agenda to include an item five at the end. All right. So next is select board to approve the minutes from last time, which was December 21st.
Motion to approve the minutes of...
December 21st.
December 21st.
Second?
Any discussion? I thought they looked good. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions?
Abstention?
One abstention. Motion carries. Next is the town manager report given by Mr. Upson.
Okay. So we had two weeks of holiday. The last... Last week, the phone didn't ring in my office. Maybe once out of four days. It was the greatest thing in the world.
Not really. Really? The phone was quiet?
The work he got done.
But then, the day after New Year's, the phone rang. And it started working again.
Okay.
So today, we received the draft set of permit drawings for the pedestrian bridge to review. This set of drawings will be used when submitting permits to local, state, and federal agencies. Construction plans are soon to follow, which will be used to go out to bid. So that's more progress on the pedestrian bridge.
Good.
We have to get a permit from the U.S. Coast Guard.
Of course we do. We're right on the coast.
Yeah. Because the Lemoore River is an admissible water. I didn't think that I...
I've been in it with a canoe, so I can attest.
I have too. I have too.
Okay. So there we go.
Not there.
I haven't seen it yet.
No, that's true. Not there.
Yes, yes.
You have been?
Yes.
All right. I haven't.
Not a lot of tall ships, though.
No.
No aircraft carriers coming up the Lemoore River. Okay. Police chief advertising update. We have received two applicants for the police chief position. Our petition will be posted until January 15th. Have a meeting on Tuesday with a state project planner. These planners have been stood up recently to assist small communities with project prioritization and planning for flood relief effort. So more to come on that. This is... They're going to help us try to get the ball rolling on some of the relief efforts. And like some of the permanent work that we're going to have to do. So this is going to be like a liaison between, you know, the hydraulic studies that the state needs to come through, which we've only received one. Stuff like that.
Would this... Would that tie in?
Yeah.
Does that tie in at all to our item three with the NCRS?
No.
It's...
Believe it's separate.
Okay.
Yeah. But we could ask for assistance for that, but we'll get into that.
We'll get to it. Everyone get to it. Yep.
Winter shutdown will be occurring at the end of the week for the current upgrade project of the wastewater treatment facility. Work will resume in the spring. April is when the schedule says they will install the new lagoon liner on lagoon number one. Our engineering firm, Al Richelieu, has submitted priority funding applications for the state's water investment development for the next fiscal year for the current project. So we're still asking for money.
Good.
Yeah.
Good. Keep at it.
The police... This is interesting. No... The police chief and I attended a meeting organized by the government staff two Mondays ago to discuss the current challenges law enforcement agencies are facing when it comes to substance use disorder-related crime, mental health crisis response, dealing with repeat offender issues in the judicial system. The state legislature will be looking closely at these issues during the public session, so it was important to pay attention to what is happening in Montpelier and to contact senators, senator, and representative with questions and/or comments. I felt that the meeting reassured me that Hardwick wasn't the only community plagued with these issues. I have hope that we can improve in all areas of community health and make Hardwick even better than it already is. So we're not alone here. I know it's a little crazy out there right now, but...
It was a constructive meeting.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah.
Is there follow-up planned from that?
There's one more set... There's one more like panel discussion, but it's really what the upper management and the government is pushing down to legislation to look at during the legislative session.
Did you get a sense of where Hardwick fits on a continuum?
We are Rutland, Brattleboro, Bennington, Burlington.
Which are in big trouble.
Only because of population.
But we have no... The same similar problems. Homelessness is a big issue in all those communities as well as in ours. Burlington... Vermont, I think, has the highest rate of homelessness per capita in the nation right now.
Wow.
Yeah. So...
Per capita. I mean...
Right. But it's still not a good statistic.
Right.
To be the highest in. So we've just got to keep on plugging along.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Number one solution for homelessness? Employment.
I was going to say housing.
There's a lot of number ones, but...
Yeah. Well, thank you for...
Community is very important, and I think we have a strong community here, and we need to continue that effort. And everybody has a role in that.
Thank you to you and Mike for attending and tracking that. I think that's really important at a state level.
That's all. Signing off.
Signing off. handing over. Next up is road foreman report. We have Tom Fadden live and in person.
Quick and sweet. All was good. All was good. It's good. Basically, the only thing that we've been up to is just basically just on roads trying to button those back up. I know that we probably spent somewhere close to $8,000, $9,000 from this last two weeks there of all the mud and stuff that we've been dealing with the ruts. Went out yesterday with the grader and stuff, tried to carve down some of the ruts here and there and took some stay mat and filled in some of the potholes and some of the deeper ruts and stuff and got the road back the best that we could, so everything's brought back on. But besides that, everything's good.
Okay.
About all.
Good.
Like Gold said, been short, short two weeks, so...
Yeah. All right.
Yeah, our roads are just better than I bet... Yeah, as good as anybody's. Better than most.
Do you miss the snow?
Like where you're not that rich or...
Do you miss the snow?
No. And yes. I mean, for us, it's boredom.
Yeah.
You know, over there, it's just...
Well, we've got some beautiful new winter banners.
That's like going up to a hospital and saying it's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Literally.
Yeah. Those are like...
Yeah. We got...
That was a trap.
So whatever...
Yeah.
They're in the hall, actually downstairs.
Well, they just come?
When it locks, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So before anybody else gives Tommy more work, I'm going to move us along.
I was going to save it for new business, but...
Okay. There you go. Banners.
I was already on top of that.
No, we wasn't.
Yeah, it was. I've been looking at it all day.
All right. Police chief must be otherwise engaged?
Yeah.
Okay. So do you want to report anything for PD or just that you went to the meeting within?
We sent Andrew off Wednesday.
Yeah.
Tuesday, Wednesday, Wednesday, last day. So we're down a guy.
Okay.
Can I, in a positive way, the applications we get for chief legit? You think? Oh, did you just glance at them and say, well, these...
Is there... Are there people that are...
Never mind.
Are there people that are in Vermont at least?
I just hope that, I mean, police chief's positions right now are paying...
Right. So they're legit candidates, but can we afford them? Right. That's... I knew that's where you were going with that.
Yeah.
It's not really about the quality of the candidate, it's about what...
Both.
Well, it is, but like you said...
Let's hope somebody wants to make a career change or a change in location to come work in a great town for less money.
Yep. Other people have done it before.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. They left a week later by sliding out of the door, too.
Oh, geez. All right. So next up is item one, town clerk treasurer, Tanya Chase, is here to discuss the time and location of a town meeting with the board. She is also very kindly taking our minutes.
Okay. So big question. Do you think townhouse would be ready for early town meeting?
Won't be ready for town meeting. It's out... The project is out to bid right now.
Okay.
Unless we decide that we really want to do it there.
Right. I don't... For my... It's presidential primary to school votes. That is the link you think, so I think it'll be a lot of people.
It'll be ready next year.
Okay. So good with elementary school?
Are they... Are they good with us?
I'm sure they will be. I just wanted to check the... Yep.
All if we promise to do it at the townhouse next year.
Okay.
As soon as the stage is ready for us, we're ready to go there.
Okay. That's great.
That's the only... Yeah. We're just waiting for the stage to be handicapped and successful.
She deserves it. She's not getting there long enough.
Yeah. I mean, hopefully, yeah.
Yeah. Well, we're all excited about the... Well, I think.
She might wear a piece of it this year.
We're all excited about the addition and the upgrades.
Right. And that's...
And that'll provide what we need.
Happening might, you know, they might be able to get started.
Well, regardless...
It won't be done.
Facility's definitely improved dramatically.
And then the trailhead and the parking will be a little bit better delineated. All that stuff will be better next year.
Okay.
10 o'clock still? What you usually do?
10 o'clock. 10 o'clock.
Will there be square?
Second Tuesday in March.
March 5th.
I won't ask that.
No. First Tuesday in March.
First Tuesday.
First Tuesday in March, which is the 5th.
10 o'clock.
Okay. 10 o'clock at the elementary school. Tanya, to confirm with the elementary school.
Yes. Perfect.
That all sounds good.
Do you want to do a pitch for people to get their petitions if they're going to run for...
Yes. So petitions are three select boards, one three-year, two one-year. Hazen has one three-year and then two, two years remaining on a three-year. And I need those... Oh, I didn't bring it up. 29th of January.
Yep. That's what you told me.
By 5:00 P.M.
I've already turned mine in, but if anybody wants to run against me, I welcome it.
Say we have one... Your... Wes is not running, correct?
Right. I'm not.
Should we have a...
Got a few people pick up.
Great.
Really?
And Sherry's the only one who's brought it back, so bring them back, please. But, yeah.
Good. We got some action.
Bye-bye.
For the school board, too?
Nothing for the school board, yeah.
Jeez.
And what about the elementary school board? Do they also have...
They do. I don't remember that one.
But they have some openings, too?
They do. I think...
Okay.
Two, maybe three openings. Theirs are not done at town meeting. Theirs are done at their annual in February. I don't remember the date.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. But for town meeting?
Town meeting.
There's still time to pick up a petition?
Yeah.
To get on the ballot for a select board seat. You only need 23?
23 signatures.
23 signatures on a form?
Yeah.
And they're due the 29th?
29th. We're open until 5:00 P.M. Yep.
And Hazen, same thing. Hazen Union?
Hazen's the same thing. Yep.
Or also be good to have some people run?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
Next up is item two, follow-up discussion with Hardwick Rescue about the location for a new building. We have a couple people. We have Harry and Mary here from Hardwick Rescue. We had talked last time about a proposed location at Creamery Road. I know that at the end of the meeting, at least my recollection, as we said, we want somebody to vet the space that you proposed and...
You and Danny were going to go out this year.
We're going to go out, and Danny didn't call me.
No. Well, we did, though.
I did.
They went over and paid us that.
So we had the staff, as it turns out. So the location... So and then I further really would like to have our plan for that property laid out before we start parsing it up anymore. But, Miss David Upson, can you give us just an update on you and did you go out with Kristen?
Yeah.
And tell us a little about what you found on the ground over there.
So we basically, where the rescue squad had given us this rough drawing...
Yeah.
I don't know if I have it in here, but you have it. The building doesn't... If you look on the other page, it's up behind the cold storage building. So we spray painted where we think the building would fit.
Which is down off the bank, down on the flat.
Down flat, closer this way from the cold storage building.
Right. Basically, right behind the gravel pile, that's the...
Yeah. The corner, the front corner of the building would be like right in the middle of where the stay mat is right now. The other one would be just, you know, 64 feet or whatever it is, and then it would go back into the bank slightly. There's the old... So the setback, we measured the setbacks, and then there's the question of the old road, and then the question of the state leased land. Because the section where the current road is basically in a rectangle all the way over to the salt shed is leased land from the state.
Yep.
And they will not allow anything built within their leased land without an act of Congress. And then the... So that... The old road, the way that's laid out would be basically right... The building would be right on top of it. So there would have to be some finagling of how that road is laid out, some discussions with the state about the leased land, whether a new right-of-way can be laid out there. So it's not as easy as just putting state in the ground. There's just going to have to be some agreements in place if a building were to go there, and then the road would need to be moved.
So the Creamery Road is a formally laid-out road?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's basically, it goes behind...
It goes, yeah. It goes straight. Goes right around.
Where the buildings used to be.
Right. The cold storage, right through the box there.
Right. As depicted on this...
Correct.
...map here.
That's where the road is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Although that's... Yeah. That's where the road is.
I conveyed all this to Tim Mesbit.
Okay.
Over the phone yesterday.
And what about the effort to dig up any plans that might have been drawn five years ago?
I haven't received anything.
And you searched your office as well and couldn't find anything?
The only thing I found were all the plans for the cold storage building, and I don't know if that was...
Yeah, that's not.
No, because that's something we just whacked up.
And then I found a similar map like that with some colored buildings put in place, but that was it. No conceptual drawing or anything like that.
So the things that I noted over there when I did my walk-around was that corner is pretty small, and when you put a building there and a road there, it's going to... I don't know how it's all going to fit. The other thing is, I also noticed we're using that space currently.
Yeah. Material stockpiled there.
Well, yeah, and equipment and stuff. So we got to, you know, think about... I agree with Eric that we need to figure out the base plan of that property before we start giving it away.
What if we put it where the Quonset hut is? Because we know that that's going to come down and we're going to sell it to somebody for a bunch of money.
Quonset hut is, yeah. I gotta believe that.
Everything shifts over to where the current rescue building is and the town garage. All that kind of shifts over maybe, and then the...
So that's the thing.
Place where the Quonset hut is is pretty big space.
And I think, though, where that line of thinking gets you is that there is space on this property for everybody, I have to believe, but I'm not quite sure what the layout is yet.
Yeah.
And I hate to... Yeah, it's not what you guys want to hear.
Well, no.
Harry, could you just give your name?
Sure. Harry Bessett. I appreciate the quick response, and that's what we were asking for, because we needed to know that before we started campaign committee, you know, and all of that stuff, we needed to say, well, what are we doing?
Yeah.
And where are we doing it? So that was the number one thing. So whatever you come up with, that helps us rather than having a meeting that's Monday night. It's like, well, what are we doing? You know? We're not approaching people to donate money to Hardwick Rescue when we don't even have a space for it. So that's what prompted us coming and saying, okay.
Well, it's certainly not simple enough process for us to be able to say yes to because we had too many other people work.
And two weeks ago was not the first time that we interacted.
No.
And so it was just, okay, after months gone by, it was like, well, okay. And that's all fair enough, but we just wanted clarification on where the town select board is.
Seems like we need to hire...
If we were confident that we had a big enough facility for the fire and highway over here and still have storage and everything, then it quite possibly could be off the side of the, you know, closer to the cold storage. You know what I mean? Off that end, there's probably room there if we didn't need it for something else.
Well, the space does lend itself with the road going through to also phase, because obviously, we can't afford to re... To move fire and town all at the same time anyway. It would be a big lift to do all that at once. The space does lend itself to build from that corner over because that's undeveloped right now. So that way, if department still has it, similar to EMTs, you still have a building you can use while we're putting up something new. There's a big value in that.
Right. But they were very adamant about they want to move forward.
Yeah, yeah. What I'm saying is it seems like we need to hire somebody to help us come up with a concept that...
Conceptual drawing.
That basically fits.
Well, I agree, but I'm just saying that they want to move...
So this was the term for the fifth site that we considered, and there's been talk about... The first step was, do we just add on to the current building?
Right.
And of course, sometimes add-ons end up being more expensive than tear downs, so we run into that. Then is the site a good spot? And then what do we do during construction? And so there's been, you know, good conversations about where we might be temporarily housed while it's being built. So all those things were discussed, and then it was like, oh, but if it could just be a swap, well, that would be seemingly ideal, but that doesn't mean that it's ideal for all the parties involved.
The building across from the old building there across from them, is that on... Do we own that or is that leased?
It's not in the state lease. I don't think it is.
That's not... We own. We own that land, so the lease...
Yeah, but you probably can't take that down and put something else up. We won't get approval from the state for it.
We won't?
No, because it's in the right-of-way that we...
That would be a tough.
That was his question.
Well, I'm talking about just taking that building down to straighten a road out would gain fifty, sixty feet in front of their existing building and give them a lot more room in that corner.
Oh.
I mean, I, I know you don't want to have to tear the building down and be without a building, put a new building up, but redevelopment of that corner might, I don't know.
Or even if absent that, that would really help. Like even if we can get a conceptual plan that shows rescue over in the corner that they propose. What you just mentioned about moving that road gives us a lot more space to put a town garage where rescue and the town garage are now.
So our answer to these folks is what we're talking about tonight.
Our, I believe our answer should be, just as one person, that we will try to get a conceptual plan for this property as quickly as we can.
With, with that building in mind?
With that building in mind.
Well, that's going to be the, I mean, that space over there won't be part of our big building anyway regardless. It'll be, you see what I'm saying?
No, but there's, if we put a big building, we also have to keep be cognizant of our sand pile, our other piles.
Yeah, yeah. So that's, I'm on, okay, I agree with you.
Well, the overall plan that we were coming up with Danny was, we take the sand pile, we rotate it where the Quonset is. Take the store, cold storage building where it is now, you add on to that for the new town garage. Where the old town garage is right now.
Which way?
Towards the sand pile way.
Okay.
Because the other side, you know, if you wanted to, you're gonna have to either new salt shed or keep using that building that you're talking about flattening. So rotate that around. And then like me and Olve was talking about the other day over there, we could flatten the town garage as it sits now because there's plenty of land out back. That could be all fire and rescue straight through there.
Dude, I don't know if you guys follow that.
Multiple buildings though, or?
What's that?
Multiple buildings?
Yeah.
Well, like you said, there's no way you're gonna be able to afford a whole thing all at once.
Fire, a fire and EMT building.
Yeah, well, you know, then we're back to three heating systems and two showers and three nets, three that.
We're doing it.
Danny's looking for a comment.
Doesn't, doesn't make sense to me, but I'm.
I have a question on this. Has anyone heard that that Quonset building is actually historical structure?
Absolutely, yes.
Absolutely, yes.
Is that, I mean, I, did I pick that up from somewhere? It's been discussed. It's been discussed that it's a historical structure.
Is it in ways?
What does that affect?
Do you want to comment?
Well, we might be able to sell it to somebody, let them take it apart and take it away.
That's, that building was bought by the town in nineteen forty-six. It is World War II Army surplus.
It's one of the last ones.
It was put up in nineteen forty-seven, you know, and laid out as the town garage. Less than thirty years later, it became inadequate and they built that nineteen seventy-two building. And, and we're what now? Fifty, sixty years since that. Quonset huts were all over the place right after the war because they were cheap, they were easy, and we needed a lot of different buildings. But they have been gradually been dismantled. This is one of about, I don't know, a half a dozen of these original World War II buildings that are still left in the state.
Can it be taken down?
Technically, it could be taken down. They were, they were developed, I mean, it's just corrugated iron and they have these squirrely nails that they were put in to keep it together. They were designed to be put up, taken down fast by people with no experience. There's a huge hole in the back of it. I hadn't heard about the selling it. There's a lot of metal in there. At one time, I was throwing hysterics on the floor about you're not going to move that building, yada, yada, yada. But I think that we cannot, not everybody agrees with this, with me about this like Tracy Martin. We cannot stop what the present needs just to be reverent about the past unless it makes sense. And having that building right there just makes everything about working with that territory difficult. Eric has suggested maybe moving it down where the old, down ER Fletcher Shed, where, where the Fletcher Shed used to be. I like, if, if it's not going to be there, I don't have any thoughts at all about where it should be. And maybe just selling it for scrap or for somebody to reconstruct it someplace else is a good idea. But it is definitely a historical building. It's one of a type that is disappearing. And, you know, when we get rid of it, it will just be one more of the species that has disappeared.
For the record, I'm not promoting selling it for scrap. I'm talking about its historic value, that there are people that would potentially want it.
So that doesn't affect the master plan?
No.
A question, so that was, so I had heard that, Rob. But that's a moot point. And I recommend anyone that hasn't ever been inside there at night to do that. It is one of the creepiest. You hear the stuff scurrying around, you know? Great, no. I guess a question that we will have at our next meeting is when do you think a realistic breaking ground? Or what, you know, are we talking about two thousand and twenty-eight? Are we talking five years out, talking ten years out? So if we go back and say, okay, let's salvage some, we have a lot of enthusiasm now. And a lot of that enthusiasm is aging. And we're trying to harness that. And that enthusiasm includes willing donors. And so how do we keep that enthusiasm? Because that's also what's driving the squad in retention and recruiting is that wave of energy. And, and so if everything goes on hold for five or ten years, then I'm concerned that some of that enthusiasm.
What I would love to do is I would love to engage an architect type person to, to help us develop a conceptual plan. And as part of doing that, doing a needs assessment for the various groups that need to be there, figure out what size buildings they need and what the access needs to be. And.
They, they have that. They did that scope and study.
We need that.
For their own, for their building.
So that, so.
We haven't done that for the town garage in the.
But we could plug that into whoever we hire. And we need to do that at the town garage and the fire. But I think once, I feel like all we need is a plan that we, you know, can work with you guys and be like, all right, so this is, these are some, I'm, I'm thinking we might get, you know, one or two or three configuration possibilities. We can try to pick the best one. I don't think we need to get to breaking ground necessarily to know what's available to Hardwick Rescue. We may, before that, we should be able to say, you could build your own building here. You could join, you could join fire in a building here, you know.
Right, no, it'd be nice.
Right, but I'm thinking that's not years. I don't know. We need to contract with somebody.
Would it be nice to have a plan before the next fiscal year?
Definitely, but I, I mean, how long, how long does it really takes? If we could get somebody on board, how long does it really take to turn around? I don't know. I don't know the answer.
And how does that fit in with other monies that might be available for that?
So we already have Allison Low from our regional planning corporation is working on a grant application for us to do just such a plan, to pay for a plan. So we're already going after the money to pay for the plan. I don't know how long the plan takes to work out. We could probably get a, we could probably reach out to some local, I'm thinking I could reach out to a local person and ask like, just like, how long do you think something like that would take?
Are we ready to do that? Are we ready to say we need?
In the fall.
Yeah, but I, so the first thing anybody I would take is going to ask us is what do you want? What are your needs?
That's the needs assessment. And that, you need to go with Tom, somebody needs to go with Tommy down to the fire department and look at what they have and talk about what they need.
That's true. In the town garage, I think we need that discussion.
All of it, yes. So we need somebody who will.
Before we develop anything, you know what I'm saying? They're not gonna say, what do you want?
That's the needs assessment part. You know, first you have to figure, they have to figure out what we need.
Once it's done, just do that.
So while we figure.
That's all one thing. Hire somebody to do the needs assessment and the conceptual.
So we need to figure out where the money comes from to hire somebody also.
Allison is working on.
We're also setting aside money in the, in the budget this year for.
Well, Mary, I can't get any better answer than you to get out of this. Asking a relatively simple question of when and getting the.
You know, it, to me, I hear that and I think, oh, five years minimum.
I've been on the board. We were just talking twelve, fifteen years. We've been talking about it.
And, and, and that's all fair enough. And so that's why the enthusiasm for us is to stay within our territory and where it overlapped to investigate. But if, if they don't, we don't.
Clear.
It's, it doesn't, we're not trying to drive your decisions, but.
If we're looking at grant funding for this, for this needs assessment, then that means that has an amount of time that you spend it in. So I think, you know, we could feasibly say that we're looking at, you know, a year.
This year.
To eighteen months.
Hopefully this year.
To have a plan and have a path forward.
Yeah.
And know what it's gonna cost and figure out how the phasing happens and what happens next.
That's the other part that we're gonna ask for is a rough cost.
Yeah.
And then does that have to be, have the town sign in on that? I mean, does it have to go to the townspeople to vote on an expansion?
If we ask for money.
If we need a bond.
We need a bond.
We have to bond.
But if we just get, if we can just get to the point of the plan. Then in working with, you know, keeping you guys in the loop the whole time, taking whatever information you have about what you need, trying to get that all laid out on this property. It's, we don't, you don't need to wait for us necessarily to, to move forward. If you're building your own building and we say, you know, like, oh, and we work out a plan that makes a space. If you're, if we're cohabitating and you're, Hardwick Rescue is leasing finished space, then yeah, I don't, I'm not, and in that case, I'm not sure exactly where our timeline is because we would need more grant writing, bond vote. That is.
They're not really interested in that. They've made, they've told us that several times because.
But that was just perhaps whoever was at that meeting, whatever that was.
Well, the timeline, that timeline, that timeline, in my opinion, is, I, I, understanding more tonight, why you guys are in such, you know, territory, because obviously we've been out fifteen years and still haven't got anything about us.
So is there any reason we can't say, we can't just say that corner, we don't have the design for it, they don't have the design for it, but probably something would fit there in some configuration? Like what?
That's a lot of.
No, but it may not be the best case scenario. That's why.
We don't, there's too many, that's, that corner is not, I don't know. I don't think we should go down that road. Do you, Olivia?
I think that we have to get permission from the state of Vermont, the rail division.
Right, so there's a lot of, before we could, we could be, there's a lot of hurdles there.
Those permissions, I assume, would also need we had for any, anything happening there.
Up there, yeah.
Yeah.
So that's not something specifically, that, that road has to be dealt with.
Yes.
Right.
In some way, that's not, you know, that's not ruling out our request.
No.
Because of the road, because you're gonna have to do that anyway.
Yes.
But that being said, so what we really came for, as I recall from the meeting, is that we wanted some assurance. And that doesn't mean that we needed a detailed, okay, this is the specific thing. But in going out and asking others, we needed some assurance that the town would support Hardwick Rescue. But I don't even know what I'm asking for in that way. We came up with that swap because we felt like we had something the town might be interested in, a fully functioning building standalone. Now, if we need to add on or change our plans or, in all honesty, there are other places outside of town that would be interested in hosting it, and it's like, well, then we may be pursue. You know, I, you know, I can argue, yeah, it's in the perfect spot right now, which isn't what I tend to argue. But others would say, you know what? It doesn't need to be in the center of Hardwick. It can be six miles that way or eight miles that way. You know, if we're just talking about a piece of land. So those are just discussions that we'll have. But at least we have a better sense that you guys are headed in a positive direction, but that we need to decide what we need to do. And if it's completely independent, because we already have that spot, then that might be. You know, a lot of people are in the teardown mode versus add-on. But if we could add on something that gave some hope, at least housing for the full-time, you know, through-the-night folks, we might be able to add that on. But, oh, sorry.
I have a question just to throw another tank in here.
So Mary, can you say your name?
Mary Hall. So where we are now, is there any possibility down the road when you guys start looking at what you want to do in expansion? So if we just stay where we were, is there any possibility of getting land off to close to where the town garage is? Like another twenty feet? At some point, my, my question is, the reason I'm asking this is because we've done preliminary drawings for redoing that building where it is, making a big look. And one of our wants is to add another bay in because twenty years down the road, we may need another ambulance. We may have more paid people. So right now, I can't get to, I can't get a full bay in there, which, you know, that would be great. We could still have a paramedic fast car. But to have a bay that was big enough to hold another ambulance would be great. And, but we would need, you know, a little bit more room. And I, I don't know. And again, I don't know if this is even feasible cost-wise. Is that something that we could add on later once you guys got your town, your town garage going and all the other stuff? That we could add on, get that property and add on? I mean, I know that's down the road too, but it's something for us to think about if we're gonna stay where we are.
I think when we look at this property, I mean, anybody can step in, but I think that when I look at this property, the only building that makes sense to really keep probably is that cold storage building because it's so new.
The newest one, yeah.
But like the town garage that we're operating out of now, unfortunately, just structural, it just, it has to go away.
Yeah.
Because it just, it will never suit the needs of the trucks we have today, not to mention the trucks we'll have tomorrow.
It's a tear down.
It is. There's not, so if you want another twenty feet.
That makes more.
Then we just slide over.
Well, you could have, to me, I would, I would think we'd be better off giving them a little more space around the existing building than we would trying to relocate it. I think that's something that we could say, we could do that sooner, right?
Well, no, because our.
They could do that on their time. It's their building. They can do the addition.
Right, but even if they needed twenty feet.
I think that's in your plans. You have plans for that addition, right, on both sides of the current building? And in the back?
Yeah.
Yeah.
From where, yeah.
The buffer zone and parking and training parking and all isn't factored in. But in terms of the footprint of.
But those things should improve when our project comes to light and the old salt building and the old town garage are gone. Things like parking will be, will exist, right, correct?
I mean, there's thirty spaces up there now.
Right, that's what.
But yeah, now that.
There'll be more.
Yeah.
And that would jeopardize anything that we're going to do because everything we're going to do with the new buildings will be on that side. So to me, that sounds like it'd be much, although it may be more costly for you folks. I'm sorry about that. It's, sounds doable in a shorter period of time than anything else up there.
And if, I mean.
And there's, in the community center space, the senior center space, the old hospital, there's kitchen rooms, individual rooms with doors. It's heated. There's wifi. So I, I think I've offered up that space to rescue for overnight. I know it's just a short drive over to the station. And I know that was asked of us when they were talking about doing the addition and moving the trucks down to the fire station. So that place is available for overnight guests. If need.
I was having to ask about that as a, as a non.
And there's, there's individual, the old individual.
Better than a food town and a shop.
I mean, I slept there during the flood.
Why are we, why are?
You write the property line, I know that.
Actually, I got a good.
No kids. No, like, no kids.
But that's available in, in any construction or long-term.
Thank you. And I don't know whose idea it was in the first place, but this sounds good. I don't know how it came to be that there was the idea of swapping out, but that's, that has gotten the discussion going to where I think that this will end up allowing us to proceed.
I mean, we could, I'm sure we can work, figure out what needs to be done over there a lot easier.
I think it's just timeframe. That's the biggest, that's where we're not aligned.
I think if we were a couple of years ahead of where we are now, we could be working with you a lot more constructively. Right.
We would definitely be more than just getting started within five years. I would say we'd like to break ground in five years or less.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah.
You know how public projects go.
Yeah.
Yeah, and especially when you, what's our item number, our budget item? Is that the next one?
Yeah, that's what I was.
That's the following one. Our budget's looking a little.
I'd say keep sending people to the meetings.
Yeah. Would it be helpful for somebody, like if we had two members of the select board or myself and a member of the select board come to your rescue meetings?
You could join rescue.
I've thought about it.
Okay, good.
We have a building committee meeting next Monday night, which would be.
But, but we can convey what's been discussed and at least come back with more information than we had before, which was basically, we can't do anything until we have a better idea. And so at least now we have.
And I, I did tell Tim, and I, I kind of went rogue on this without the select board's approval, but I did say that if we could do a one building, and I know this, we kind of went back and forth. We did one building with two or three bays for rescue and quarters. I think the town of Hardwick and the voters of the town of Hardwick would lease that to you for.
Small cost.
I, I don't want to say a dollar, but I think it would be that, and you could take that off your budget, your annual budget, is we would house you here in Hardwick. And I know that being under the same roof as somebody in, with the town budget, I know that, you know, that's where it gets a little dicey.
And that's a good topic for another.
Exactly. But there is that option as well.
Good luck.
We'll keep, we'll keep going. You guys keep doing what you do and.
Keep coming back. We, this is, honestly, I feel like this is helpful because we really need to push our project and it's been backburnered too long.
I, I think we would have been a lot farther hadn't we had that July flood.
Ouch, I read.
I really do. I mean, that, that sent us back.
I know, that sent your office.
Nine years after I read, I was still here when I called Forest and Parks. I read. It's like, it's been nine years. I don't want to.
Well, it's, I didn't say.
No. Same with July.
We still have temporary bridges and.
It's eaten up a lot of time out of your office for sure. All right, so we'll work on trying to figure out what a timeframe is for a plan. And we're actively pursuing funding for planning.
So we will have a meeting and then invite.
I mean, we could.
To a field committee.
Yeah.
Sort, sort out a month or so and, and see where we're at.
That would be great. I really want us to be as supportive as we can be because we really value your service in the community.
We know, we know you guys are. We know it's, it's, everybody's on a different timeline and I know it's hard.
And it's hard to appreciate, but it's kind of obvious theme, but it's been my theme for a long time too. This is a special community. And one of the ways it's a special community is the volunteerism. And that is what is disappearing in every other community. And it's under siege here, but.
We're not gonna let it.
What's that?
We're not gonna let it happen.
But this is, you know, this is the volunteers doing it. This is not the paid staff. This is the volunteers that want to set this up.
Yeah.
You know, so, so we can get that. But, but it is a unique community in that way, where it might not make sense in other communities. Just absorption by the town might make sense. But in this community.
We don't want to.
But it becomes a necessity in some.
Right, right.
Well, I'm not gonna be very popular with this one, but we can say it anyway.
We're reaching the time limit on this.
Yeah, but unfortunately, when I look at you folks, the rescue right now, I, I understand why the community is, it's gone away, why it's gone away. And I, unfortunately, love you all, all you folks, all of folks. You know, we, it's gonna go away because you guys are the only volunteers. That's the problem.
We're not gonna let it.
Well.
We're gonna work hard.
I know that, but, well, okay. You guys didn't talk about.
Get a positive attitude.
Well, a positive attitude is not gonna get it done.
I agree with that in some ways, but that doesn't mean we can't have a hybrid model.
No, I, I support John. I just wish that there was more young people that wanted to get involved.
But that's what Hardwick Rescue has. We have young people that are volunteering.
Yeah.
Which, and that's what we want to keep.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah, that's great. All right, so we should just keep this conversation. Yeah, that's great. All right, so we should just keep this conversation.
Do ourselves.
No, we should keep it going as time goes, keep coming back.
See it in two weeks.
Yeah, exactly.
I reached my maximum.
All right. Uh, please feel free, please do stay on if you're interested.
Yeah.
You don't have to, but we'd be happy.
It's really.
As long as you, I'd get out of here before the budget cut.
No, that's the part I wanted to say.
Somebody's gonna get caught. You don't want me to want to sit here.
All right, so I'm gonna move us on to item three, which is discussion regarding emergency watershed protection, sponsorship for three properties identified by NRCS, National, no, Natural Resource Conservation.
Conservation Service.
Watershed Protection.
Right here.
Anyway.
Oh, it's right there.
Let's, let's get it up.
So.
I make a motion, please sponsor three properties.
No, you're not.
I just wanna, I just wanna give you.
I don't think that's the way Robert's rules work.
You can make a motion.
Regardless, you can do a point of order.
No, point of order. Don't go ahead. Tell me.
I think this is informational. There's a large match on this stuff if you look.
This is Action, Action Jackson right there.
There's a large match.
We got it.
We do? So this is basically, um, okay, I'm just, I'm just gonna paraphrase what Opie told me earlier in the day, but basically he's looking at some properties, the NCRS, um, NRCS identified where they're basically would, would armor the riverbank to protect three existing properties. What this does for the, for the individual property owners is obvious. It helps them maintain their places. What it does for the town is it keeps those properties as viable properties where people live, keeps them on our grand list as opposed to the next flood makes it worse and then there's a FEMA buyout and then it's not on our grand list.
Okay, so.
That's great.
We went to eight properties. Out of the eight properties, there were three properties. They came back and they provided us with a budget of $420,193,000, of which $123,586.25 the town would have to come up with as sponsors. So there's a ma, there's a 25% match to this and that's where it's, we should go, we need to figure out where we're gonna get this match money because we're budgeted.
Where are the properties?
Um, in Hartwick, there's.
They were in our packet, the addresses.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, and then I've since received some other information from the program that they don't have, um, enough engineering. The engineering workload brought on by the July 23 storms plus our regular farm bill commitments, the NRCS cannot provide the engineering services to design the EWP projects in Hartwick. Therefore, we ask that you hire, hire a private third party professional engineer to complete the necessary design work, construction and oversight. It is possible that the technical administrative expense will exceed the, the TA funds we can oblige requiring Hartwick to contribute resources to complete the technical administrative work.
So basically then we're at risk and it's on the town.
We're not at risk. We're, we're on the hook.
That's, that's what I mean. We're on the hook.
They're telling us it's gonna happen.
Go hire, go hire somebody and it may cost more than hiring us.
Um, there's just a lot of, I, I think it's a great program and I think that the, the properties that are eligible, I think would, it would hugely benefit. Um, but I think that we should be engaging with the landowners and the property owners to see what, and I know that resources are tight for a few of them and one of them might not even want to be in the program.
Can we pick and choose? Can we go back to?
I have to find out if we can eliminate.
Can we say we want to do this one and this one, but not that one? You'll find out?
Yeah.
How much of a hit would it be if we lost all three properties?
Grand list.
On the grand list?
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, that's a good question. I don't know exactly, um.
And I don't need an answer right now, but if there's a question worth factoring in.
We, I don't, we, so we're looking at a couple of hundred thousand dollars or more.
And the project management and engineering.
Right, we're looking at a quarter of a million dollars.
And we have.
Taxpayer money to individual landowners on us, say on that boat.
You were the one who made a motion.
You wanted to make a motion.
Well, I thought you did. Whoa, whoa, whoa. It worked out well.
I think it would be really different if we didn't have to do the engineering. I would be, I would be for this if it wasn't on us to do. That's a huge.
Let's just look at.
It's another, it's another more project management that we don't have.
But we don't have the quarter of a million dollars, so it's not a matter of whether we would like to do it or not. Because even if we wanted to do it, I, let's go to page 13 here.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? We don't, we just plain don't have it or any way of getting.
So I'm, right now I'm looking at trying to get creative with one of the properties. We're gonna, we're gonna talk to FEMA because they, they had, they sustained damage within the home. So we could potentially discuss with them if they could cover a match.
Yeah, if, if an individual wanted to.
This program was sold to me right after the flood by state and federal partners saying, hey, send out a letter, ask for their help. They'll come and check things out and, and this is the result of it.
Bye, bye business.
Well, I'm glad you did.
Yeah, me too. But it's not, um, it's not, there's, there's more to the solution.
And it's, can the individual property owners go to USDA perhaps?
We need to, they could be like, we're the grantee, we're the sponsor.
This is the USDA.
Yeah, it is.
But if the homeowner, if the landowner wanted to cough up the cash and we could do it, then I, we, I would sponsor him.
So this is where.
If the individuals all wanted to pay the money, I'd be more than glad to kick him a little bit.
This is where equity comes into play though.
Right, right.
So I, I just want to point out that, um, documents are due back no later than Monday, February 19th. And, um, this is fairly late breaking news coming to us and you're still gathering information and talking to landlords.
But I, I wanted to put this in front of you because it's important stuff for us to consider this and not just make a motion.
Yeah.
Well, why don't we at least just talk to landowners before our next meeting?
Yeah.
And, and check on what to grant this, how it's gonna affect the grant list.
Yeah.
Things, a couple of other questions.
And then my only other question would be if these three properties are eligible and we have another flood and something happens to those properties.
What?
Is that a con, do they have some sort of consequence? Like do they not give, you know, I don't know if there's.
So one of the properties sustained damage last week and documented it.
Okay.
So that'll just add to the cost of the repair. And those, those are pretty high level, uh, cost estimates. You know, from all the bells and whistles. So it may not cost.
Yeah.
But it is, it is a major bummer that they are looking to us to basically G C the project.
Right.
And hire the engineer, yeah.
Because of their workload.
Keep it going, Larry.
Okay.
No action.
Nope.
Sorry about that. It said action required.
I said, that action would be.
I was pulling the trigger.
Keep going.
Possible action needed.
Be tempted, yeah, you gotta simmer it down.
I'm gonna start.
I did simmer it down in your living room.
Don't worry, I'm not gonna make a motion to pass the next one.
All right. Um, next up is item four, the moment we've all been waiting for is a recap of the budget. Um, and I, I would sum it up like this. I would say that absent some major change tonight, uh, we're looking at nearly a 10% increase in our budget over last year, which is a big increase.
It's not 30%.
Hmm?
It's not 30%.
It's totally not 30%. I think that the stuff we have in here is reasonable. It's just that when you add it all up, it, it just comes to a, a really big increase. I mean, there are some big numbers in here and I know that folks on the board, I know, well, of course, Casey and Opie have been working on this for weeks and Casey's done a ton to tune it up and get its actual numbers. I also know people on the board have been looking through and trying to find places we could potentially save, but the trouble is in order to make a real impact on such a large number, you have to remove like 200, 250,000 dollars. It's not removing like.
5,000 ain't gonna get it done.
It's not gonna do very much. Um, in fact, so 1% is about $37,000. Right? So even to go from 9.6 down to 8.6, you gotta find 37. Um, and I don't know, I have one question, which probably has an answer. If Casey were here and probably we don't have an answer without her, but I had a question on the police budget. There's a retirement expense increase that I thought was kind of big and I'm sure it's legit. I just wondered about it. In the police budget, there's a big jump in retirement expense.
They don't talk.
The, they've increased their Beamers, the Beamers has increased their contributions. The employer paid contributions.
It was the same in, in all.
All budgets?
Yeah.
I just only noticed it there.
Yeah, it wasn't as much in for the town, the office, or the.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
It goes up across, huh?
That's like, uh, I saw, I did a little research on Beamers.
It's like the state decides it basically.
Okay.
It's the state municipal retirement system, so they, we got a letter saying that our contributions increased.
And Casey just plugged it in.
Yeah.
Got it.
We really have no choice in that one.
The only other thing that I.
We can't get out of Beamers either.
Right.
Found that.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it's like you, if you're a town employee, you have to enroll in that.
Yeah, but it is, okay. It is good benefit.
Sure, it's great.
Okay.
But I don't like to be.
Told that you have to do it. I know. So the only other thing that I saw, and maybe this is, somebody can tell me I'm out of my, out of my tree. But, um, one of the big things that's driving, you know, a huge, a huge increase.
What you looking at?
I'm looking at the capital equipment purchase schedule. Um, and a huge increase is that we have to put a lot more into this every year because of the increase in the cost of equipment. And because the, basically this capital equipment fund has almost a zero dollar balance heading in and we have big purchases scheduled next year. So I wondered, looking at the ones scheduled next year, could, could we put off the police cruiser purchase? It's 48,000. Could we bump that down to the year below and have two police cruisers the next year? Where in that, so just in the totals, so in 2025, we're forecasting a total of 268 expenditure, but the next year, 26, it's only 92,000. So it seems like it would help even things out a bit if we push that down and we could maybe take that out. I'm not really sure if that works. It's just an idea.
Why do we have the excavator?
That was this current year because we bought it this year in 24.
This is fiscal year, Danny, not year to year.
So 24, it's the year we're in.
We're going in the fiscal year 2025.
And we're looking at the dump truck and the police cruiser as the two expenses.
Yeah.
Coming up in this budget.
Right, and we already did.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
But there's no way we're gonna be able to get a dump truck this year.
But are we gonna have to pay for it this year?
No. My food is on that Eric.
Wait, wait, so just to clarify, you're talking about the dump truck four that's scheduled in 2025?
Right, this year.
Okay, no, the next year.
No, this come in fiscal year. This is actually fiscal year 2025, so come July 1st.
Yeah.
We're in fiscal year 2025.
Right, and that's the budget we're working on.
So this is dump truck four.
So that's a dump truck you're supposed to.
Dump truck four.
This year.
Yeah.
It's not ordered yet, hang on.
No, 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 no. It's just that I can order the chassis right now, but it ain't gonna do us any good.
Okay.
We can get it in the spring.
Okay.
But to do a body build and a complete build on it, we're looking at January of next year.
Okay.
You see what I mean?
Yeah.
So we're almost, we're almost gonna have to push the trucks out like a year just because we're gonna have to kind of switch around the planning on this, just the way the body builders are doing.
Yeah.
Cause there's no way that we can trade the truck in.
Right.
To get our 60,000 for it and be the entire winter without a truck.
So you're saying we're gonna have to hang on to the truck that we have.
That truck.
Yeah.
Then come towards, you know, late winter of next year.
Yeah.
Or, yeah.
Yeah.
The next winter.
In fiscal 25.
Then have a body build to fall in summer.
But when do we pay for the chassis?
That would be the fall.
In 20, will it be 25 or will it go into?
2026.
We could probably pay for it in 20, well, the year 2026.
Yeah.
But will the fiscal year 2026? So it'll be after July 1 of 25.
Right.
It'd still be in this budget.
No, he's saying.
In the winter, late winter of 25, it's still in fiscal year 25.
It, it, it would be, I mean, it's getting to the reality point of just, we are a year out on getting, getting bodies and stuff.
Yeah.
But then you'd also be getting a new truck at the end of the winter.
Change our schedule around it so that we get, we order that other truck in 2027.
Wait, which, oh, the next one that comes up?
So is it more accurate?
Cause we skipped two years on big trucks.
I mean, it's either way.
You know what I mean? We might want to look at spacing it out a little more, Tommy. You know what I mean? Instead of going three years without, two years without a big truck. Well, I guess we're going, but anyway, I, so one thing I can say is this capital equipment schedule.
Well, I know this for a fact, F250 we got. We don't have to get rid of that.
Right, I was thinking.
I mean, there's nothing wrong with that truck.
We're the 150 either.
Yeah, and the 150 either.
But let's just leave those as.
Play solvers.
Kind of, you know, we'll play that card and we come to it. Did you see how we, you order, you got one coming?
Yes.
You'll get 26, then we, we skip a couple of years. So anyway, I, what I was gonna say is this, this capital, capital equipment, as we traditionally started out 10 years ago when we started all of us, or us. We wrote checks for things. That's what this was for. That's changed now to the point where we're, we're leasing stuff and things like that. You see what I'm saying? So.
The only thing we're leasing though is the stuff we leased before, right? The, the.
Oh, no.
Greater and the loader.
Yeah.
Right.
But the cruisers are buying, are we buying the cruisers out there or are we?
Yeah.
Right, but we used to write a check for those things.
The greater and the loader?
Right, right.
So that's what I'm saying. So it's the, the, it's kind of changed the way we, and we didn't necessarily do it every eight years or whatever. You know what I'm saying? Sometimes if the equipment was running good, it lasted a little longer, it didn't get traded. So we're not doing things the way we used to do things and we can't get things the way we used to get things. My point is, should we look at how we're funding these things any differently? I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah.
But given the, the things that we're used to, the reason we used to use this don't exist any longer. We can't just order a truck and get one. We can't just stroke a check for one. We can't get trade ins anymore. All these things are affecting how this schedule works.
That's true, but what this schedule does enable us to do is.
Gives us an idea, I guess.
Gives us an idea, allows us to save towards our big purchases rather than borrowing for them.
But we are borrowing.
Not on these trucks.
The full price.
Well, we've got.
So it's, it sounds like what you're saying, Danny, is that we need to, not tonight, but we need to look at, look, relook at this purchase schedule and think about the equipment that we have, how we're buying it, how we're gonna be buying it in the future because things like the greater might.
The greater and the loader are, those, those dollar amounts are now in your operating budget, correct? The lease payments?
Depends.
Right, so we still have $550,000 in the year in 2039 or whatever. But we're not going to.
That's the only thing though that we're leasing. Everything else on here, we've been buying.
Right, but my point is in this schedule, that's a half a million dollars.
Down, yeah, yeah.
That we're not gonna use because we're not gonna write up a check, we're not stroking a check for it. We're gonna, we're gonna mortgage it. We're gonna pay payments on it, just like we just did.
Yeah.
So, so that don't need to be there. That 550 don't need to be there. So that's 600,000, you know, that's.
That makes a difference.
Makes a difference. And I'm just saying that.
Yep.
We're not necessarily using this as the way that John Jewett and I, when we put the time in to create this, the factors we were using are much different.
Right, right, times change and you guys.
Not that this is all, this is all we got right now.
But I do think that this is still a great tool.
Oh, I agree, but I think we can make it.
But, but you're right, like the loader, we probably shouldn't have the loader and greater in there if we're not.
That's something new that we just started doing, moving up payments in the operating.
For, just for those two, but then there are other trucks. So what we, okay, so you guys were just saying though that truck six and seven, the 250 and the 150.
Yeah, I don't see.
Very likely will live longer. They probably don't need.
Yeah, they only got.
Well, they should live the way. Well, they should live the way all the past ones have.
Just live until they're done.
Till we take them to games.
Live until they're done.
That will usually run them.
You know what I mean? That, they're not, we don't have to go to Burlington every day with them. So you can run those, you can maintain them, we can get to the point where we take it down to Donuts and they can do a brake job on it, and you know what I mean?
Yeah.
And it's aluminum, it ain't gonna rust. So those things may not need to be in there either. So now, the things that we need, like the big trucks-
Yeah.
You know, and we're not gonna get, what, truck two, is that a ten wheeler?
No, F one.
That's yours, so that might be a close, but, I don't know, I just, my point being is this is a little bit-
So I come back, I think this is great to go through this.
And when we, so what this amounts to, right?
Hmm.
We did, we just took six hundred thousand dollars anyway, more than that, out of this thing right here.
Yeah.
So that tells me that we have to put a lot less into this capital fund.
So I'd say you're, you're almost right.
We need more than four grand in it, which is what we have right now.
Well, yes, but, yes.
So that's the trick of where we're, where we are for this coming year, is that we don't have, you know?
Well, as long as we got four grand, I'm not worried about four grand this coming year, cause it's four grand next year's.
I'm worried about it because in order to land with four, with fifty six hundred at the end of twenty five, where we need to put in two hundred and sixty five, so that's my concern, and that's why I was asking about the police cruiser, could that be put off?
I didn't realize we'd put those numbers up so high.
Yeah, do you see that jump from last year to this year?
Yeah, what, uh-
Because next year we're, we're tight, and then the thing is, if we could ease up on next year in some way, if you look at the account balance, things look a lot better, and then the next year we're tight is the year of that loader grader purchase that you don't want anymore.
Shame on me for, no, not paying attention to a hundred and fifteen thousand dollar increase in that.
So the question is, if we, if we basically took out the police cruiser, that would save us roughly fifty grand, so that would leave the-
Well, it just puts it out a year, but I, we need to rework this and see how it works. Are you doing that?
Yeah, so just, and then, so if we-
No, I don't want the account balance to go up, I wanna contribute less this year cause that directly affects our budget.
That's the two sixty five.
I agree.
Yeah, I wanna take that two sixty-
Let's cut that back to a hundred and sixty five.
Oh, we can't do that and still get, replace dump truck four.
Balance.
Well, the question about dump truck four.
Favorite number.
You said that was gonna be, that, well-
Well, it's come out of the budget somewhere else.
No, it could be a negative number this year, at the end of the year. Why can't it be? It's just a number.
Because it need, as long as there's available cash to balance it out.
Track in or not?
Cause we're actually spending, we'd actually be spending-
So, boy, this is late, I'm late to the game on this one.
So you said one sixty five instead of two sixty five?
That's what he said, no, that's what he said. I said, what if we took out, what if we just backed it down forty eight thousand, whatever that is, to, um-
That's two twenty.
Twenty eight? No, two twenty seven?
That would leave it to just dump truck four, it would be two, two hundred and twenty thousand, which is what we're spending, theoretically spending next year.
And Tommy's telling us we did, probably are not gonna need that money until twenty six, right, Tom?
Right, I think we oughta budget out to twenty twenty six.
Twenty six, I'm-
It's just that because there's, there's no way with the body-
I agree.
Because that's going to the following year, so if I can order, order that chassis the spring of twenty twenty five, and then come in towards the middle of June, then that way we can, I'll, you know, I can get ahead of it and say, tell the guys, look, I wanna be in the body build for July first next year.
Yeah.
We can do a complete trade in and everything else, not worry about not having the truck down for the winter. That puts us out.
And that'll put, to take care of the two year gap thing.
Right, because like the F five fifty, where it's supposed to be in twenty twenty eight this year, we gotta actually bump that down because we were actually a year and a half longer on that truck.
Yeah.
So why don't we do this? Why don't we for this year, cause this is what we're talking about tonight, why don't we for this year bump the two twenty to the next year, leave the cruiser, so we're putting in something, right, forty eight?
Yeah, I hate to get out of the cruiser cycle.
And then, and then maybe Tommy and Danny or whoever else can rework the following years, but for tonight, we're just voting on that, next year's number.
Oh, I would say, and that this may be an unpopular thing to say, I would say-
Do it all the time, Tommy.
I do, that it is possible to have a special meeting before our next meeting-
Yeah.
And give Kate, give Casey a chance to-
Do it on it?
Yeah.
Cause that would make a really big impact on this.
Because, because the other thing I don't wanna do is I don't wanna put us in a situation where all we're doing is kicking the can down to just next year, and we're sitting here, next year, facing the same big knock. So I really wanna work through this capital budget.
Yeah, and it needs to be some changes if we're gonna-
Yeah.
So it's not, it's not, I don't see us going to two seventy following year, two seventy five, two eighty. I, I, I see that being-
Well, see how, well, see how that's carrying a really big balance.
Yeah, that's why.
Right, so it might not be needed.
You know, you take that number right there alone out of there.
Yeah, you're, yeah, take out the loader grader, and then-
You don't need that, you don't need nine hundred thousand dollars-
Right.
Twenty thirty six.
Right.
You know what I mean? You only, you don't really need three hundred thousand dollars, that's quite a change.
So when's that special meeting?
I'm not sure, I'd like to, I'd like to-
Casey to be there.
Yeah, I'd like to-
Before the eighteen.
It's gotta be-
When does it need to be?
Um, well, the eighteenth meeting was when we're gonna do the warning, so.
But they, isn't the town report due?
Town report, so if the town report is due the twenty third, so if we didn't do the warning on the eighteenth meeting, then there'd have to be a special meeting between the eighteen and-
Because the warning needs to have-
So we still got a-
The warning has to have the budget on it, correct?
So if we push out the meeting until the eighteenth, then we'd have to have a special meeting following that for the warning, but if we had a special meeting for the budget, then we could keep the-
That would probably be easier, cause eight, between the eighteenth and twenty third, it's gonna be pushing it to get everything done.
Yeah.
And Casey do the, you know, for the rest of the report.
Yeah, 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 so special-
We're all looking at that.
Yeah, special meeting for the budget would be better than pushing it back to the eighteenth, cause we need to follow, we need the warning deadline to still be on the eighteenth.
So can, would it be okay with folks, I mean, knowing that Casey's had a family emergency, that's why she's out, and so should we, it would be all right to leave it a little bit flexible and make it when, or do we know when she's gonna be back?
I can call in anytime, I might not be able to make a day meeting, but I can call in, I can stop.
We could have a night meeting, but I'm, I'm just wanting to leave some flexibility to be sure.
Next Thursday night?
Yeah, we can do next Thursday night.
Next Thursday night?
Next Thursday night, it's a date, enough cookies.
We'll, we'll tentatively say next Thursday night and hope that works for her, if it doesn't, we can push back into the beginning of the next week even.
Yeah. And then if we do it next Thursday night, maybe we can take one of the February meetings on the schedule. Four Thursday, we'd have three meetings in February.
No, we only need the first and third.
Oh, right, oh, so we have an extra, oh, yeah, okay. Why did I forget every other? Yeah.
Okay.
Like us.
I have one other small budget.
Yeah, good.
And it's small, and I feel like we talk about this every year, but just for cemeteries, we are always asked by Fairview and Main Street, and I don't know if you already had a conversation about it, but every year we decide that they're not a town owned cemetery.
Hmm.
So-
But they're town owned.
Or, are they, are, Fairview is?
Partly.
Not really.
Part of Fairview, they're-
Part of it is.
Right.
Okay.
Part of it's capital.
We have a cemetery, we've appointed people to run those cemeteries, which still are cemeteries.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's the difference.
But I like where you're going with this.
Yeah, I do, carry on.
Yeah.
My, just my question was, it was, again, we talk about it, but each cemetery has their own budget.
Yeah.
Each cemetery has their own fund, like Sandborn from Sales has their own money.
Mm-hmm.
So, and usually they ask for a lot more, like six thousand is not very much, but it's, I just don't know if it's setting a-
They're actually, we've denied their request for more funds, their last year we did.
Yeah, we've done, we've done it for three years, we've denied it, so I'm just trying to figure out why.
Cemetery, several.
This is specifically for Fairview and Main Street, right, that add on, the five, six thousand dollars?
The cost of-
Five thousand dollars.
It should be like forty, forty eight.
The one for the fire department at the top.
Sorry, it's, um, but is this like, is this mainly mowing, is it?
Yeah, so the cost of mowing has gone up.
Okay.
For, because their person who did it before is no longer doing it, and they're, they've actually hired for-
Keep going.
For Fairview, they hired the same sexton we have.
Good, keep going.
But they're, okay.
And for Main Street, I believe he does that one too.
So he's mowing?
No, he's the sexton.
In the line item somewhere.
He's the sexton, I don't know if he's-
They're, that's the guys with the white trailers that do that.
Yeah, yeah.
They're, they mow cemeteries all over.
Yeah.
So this is just for-
And so their cost to keep the cemetery up and going with the mowing has increased.
Okay.
And that's why they've asked for more.
Okay.
Yeah, and they, they're actually, they're, we need to figure out how to get them taken care of in the spring before the fiscal year changes, cause they're, they're not gonna be able to afford, they're, they're at zero balance.
Do we have a full understanding of their keeping?
I received, I asked, requested it, and I asked for what, cause we haven't gotten anything since COVID, and we're still missing the last year, and so it's been, it was some pushback-
Yeah.
When I asked for the financials.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We need the financials before we start.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Uh, it was told that this has never been a problem before, I don't know why we have to produce this.
Yeah, well, that's not a-
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
Thank you for asking.
Yeah.
And we expect them to be forthcoming.
I have some of them.
No, I'm not looking at you, I'm looking at the cemetery commissions, we expect them to be forthcoming, cause we, we requested them.
Right, and then there's the possibility of us taking over those cemeteries, I don't know how that would work, but I think there's some bylaws associated with one of them that has to be family, but the way that the sexton was hired for them, the historical, you know, the, how the financials worked was a little kinda under the radar for my liking.
Unconventional.
Unconventional.
Yeah, well, no, I was, yeah, I don't, it's the way it was always done, I, I don't think that's unconventional, it's just, it's not the way we're doing it now.
The way that was, that is like the worst statement that somebody could say, like, not to, for you, you know, for you, but this is the way we've always done it.
Well, that's why, but it used to be the grave digger took care of the cemetery, made all the money.
Yeah.
That's all I meant.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The way they used to do it is not the way we do it today.
But the benefit for us doing it is that, is that then we would also be getting revenue for that, right?
To pay for the mowing.
To pay for the mowing, to pay for whatever, so if it's a part of the town, then that's, then there's, then it's not just twenty three thousand dollars going out, there's actually some-
I mean, we're paying the same sexton-
Right.
To do work, and we're paying him twice to do-
Right.
Yeah.
Sort of. I, if I knew I was gonna have to deal with the cemetery, that would be taking the job.
That was in the other duties as a son.
Cemeteries and dogs.
Yeah, that was the job, I had to deal with that in the first day.
Had a good dog case in a while.
Well, we have a lot of them.
We have a thing.
Well, we have a good animal control officer.
Excellent.
Larry.
Oh, that's right.
And sent him to the train.
So-
Larry's a good public servant, I'll tell you, he takes the jobs that nobody else wants to deal with, and he-
He does.
Does a good job.
Yeah, so I propose that we move on from our budget discussion, that we revisit it next Thursday night, pending Casey's availability, have a sense that a bunch of us are gonna[1474.91]